We will call this meeting to order. We'll take roll call. Brummond is not here. Howard Greaves?
Here.
Kazicki?
Here.
Lind is here, and Yang is also absent. If anyone would like to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So I normally don't do this, so patience with me tonight as we're subbing in. So first, we will go through the agenda. And looking at the agenda for this evening, are there any amendments that staff or the commissioners would like to make to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, staff has no changes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Um, yes, I'll second that.
You'll make it?
Yes. I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Oh, in a second, okay, we're all set.
We need a vote real quick.
Oh, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next, we'll open the floor to anyone in the public to participate in the open forum. You can address the commission with any items not already on the agenda this evening. Um, are there any other items?
Don't believe so. I believe this might be the applicant team.
Okay, great. And we will then move on to the minutes. So from the November 7, 2024 meeting, are there any edits or changes, reflections to the minutes that anyone saw? It all looks good for me.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Awesome. Okay. So now we will move on to new business. So all items tonight, new business, are a public hearing. Uh, public comments are limited to in-person only. Um, speakers, if you could fill out a card at the start of the meeting, otherwise, we will, we have a small enough group, will welcome you to the podium. And, um, we have a five-minute time limit for those that come up to speak at the podium. So with that, first, one Old Farm Ridge preliminary plat and variance, city file number 24034, staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the first item on tonight's new business is a public hearing for, uh, the Old Farm Ridge preliminary plat and variance. Uh, the applicant, Mike Kelly, is requesting approval of a preliminary plat to create a lot at 6620 County Road 116. The lot itself is currently zoned urban reserve and is guided existing residential. The request itself includes a preliminary plat and a variance to create a lot that is less than the minimum urban reserve lot size of 20 acres. So a little background on the site. Uh, the property was originally plotted as an outlot in 1978 as part of the Country Seasons Estates subdivision. This outlot was unique in that it contained multiple agricultural buildings and the, the original farmhouse. This subdivision predated the development rights program, so the staff report from the, um, from the subdivision didn't explicitly say, um, that the parcel contained a development right on it. Uh, however, staff is, staff concludes that with the existing residential structure on there, the development right was implied on, uh, on the parcel once the development rights program was created. And after it was established, after the development rights program was established, the farmhouse had since been demolished, and, um, the map should have been updated to include it, one development right on the parcel. Analysis of, uh, of the request, the proposal, uh, the proposed lot meets all the minimum dimensional standards of the Urban Reserve District except for one, which is the minimum lot area. Uh, the applicant is requesting, uh, approval of a lot area of 7.65 acres, where a minimum lot area of 20 acres is required. Uh, this lot is in the Urban Reserve, which is, um, designed to limit premature subdivision uh, for any parcels that are within the MUSA that don't currently have access to sewer and water. Uh, and it does this through the minimum, the large minimum lot size of 20 acres. The applicant does not request to divide the parcel, only just to construct a single-family home on the, on the structure. It's worth noting that outlots, by definition, city code cannot be developed prior to plating. So in order for him to construct on this, on this parcel, he needs to plat it, and in order to plat it, he needs approval of a variance. Um, the maximum allowed size for any attached accessory structure on this property is 4,281 square feet, and the applicant is requesting an attached garage of 4,125 square feet, which does comply with this requirement. The site itself contains, um, large amounts of wetlands and a county ditch that runs, uh, down the middle of it. Uh, and due to these natural constraints, uh, access to the site will be required to come off of County Road 116. And the applicant will, um, have to coordinate the proper permits with, uh, Henderson County, since it is a county road, to gain that access. The site itself is in the fourth stage of the 2040 staging plan for municipal sanitary sewer and water. Currently, we are in the first phase of that, of that staging plan. So in the interim, uh, the applicant will be required to, uh, have the, have the residents be served by a private septic and well system, uh, which they will also be responsible for obtaining the proper permits for those as well. The variance, uh, is being requested from Section 1040.020, subdivision nine, which requires a minimum lot size of 20 acres in the Urban Reserve District. Uh, the proposed plat is six, 7.65 acres, and staff believes that this application does meet the standards in practical difficulty threshold for the variance. Uh, the practical difficulty, the practical difficulty in this, uh, request is that the site itself in its entirety is less than 20 acres and cannot be enlarged to meet that minimum lot size requirement. The circumstances are unique to the site, as it was an outlot that was created prior to the establishment of the zoning district uh, and has an assumed development right, which, um, most outlots, um, don't have that assumed development rights and, and didn't have an existing residential structure on it in, in the past. Staff believes that granting the variance aligns with the existing character of the locality and is consistent with the comprehensive plan as the surrounding locality is, uh, used primarily for residential use. But to, just to ensure that this use of the site continues to meet, um, the surrounding locality, uh, staff proposes a condition requiring any commercial activity on the parcel at all to comply with the home occupation ordinance and follow the proper approval processes. So at this point, staff recommends that you open the public hearing and take testimony. And we also recommend that, uh, you recommend approval of the preliminary plat and, uh, variance with the conditions of approval as outlined, uh, within the stat, within the draft resolution in your packets. Uh, the planning commission has the option to either recommend approval of the draft resolution without changes, or you may, um, wish to add additional amendments if, if you desire. Otherwise, um, if the commission recommends denial of the, of the, uh, variance, uh, then you should probably also, um, recommend denial of the, of the preliminary plat too, as they are intertwined.
Uh, question for staff. Thank you. Should we ask the applicant to speak first or open further?
Yeah, certainly.
Would the applicant like to approach the podium and speak to any of these pieces?
Hi, my name is Mike Kelly, and I'm, I'm the owner of the piece of property. I don't have anything really to speak on. Been working with Dwight for a long time, and we've got it to a point that we're pretty happy with.
Yeah. Awesome. Well, there was no need to present, just wanted to ask you in case you did some.
Okay.
Sometimes I want to clarify further details from what staff reported, so.
Okay, do you have any questions from here?
Um, so, uh, we can always kind of press pause on that for now and open, go through the motions of the public hearing.
Okay.
And then, um, can open it up for further discussion and.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, and with that, we'll, uh, open the public hearing. Does anyone want to make any statements? In the crowd, anyone? Okay. So with that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Great. So, let's deliberate.
Quick vote, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? I'm sorry.
No, you're doing great.
I'll get there, all right.
You're doing great.
So, now we deliberate. Get in. Any initial thoughts?
I understand that you did talk to the neighbor to the north, because that's the closest person impacted. Is he here today?
Ah.
And you're fine with this and?
Nice to have you here.
Yeah. Oh, I do, I do have one question. There's, um, a proposed on-road trail along County Road 116, I do believe.
Parks and trails, I believe you're correct. Was there anything in the engineering memo about additional right-of-way needed for that on-road trail?
I don't believe so. I can certainly look into it a little bit further. I don't believe that the engineering report had any comment on the, um, on-road trail.
You don't believe there is one?
Well, it's more of that, do we need additional right-of-way to accommodate it?
Right.
I don't know that that is, um, something that we are asking for at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, 116 says existing on-road trail on 116.
Okay, so if it's existing, that would just mean that we have right-of-way for a painted shoulder.
And then along the, um, south border, what is that, is that, um?
Crease and Parkway?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's already there.
Yep.
That's a proposed on-road trail there.
They're actually already. It's already there.
Oh, is it really? Okay. All right, go for it. I know there's a lot of wetland on the site, that's why I was kind of wondering about that, but. Is there any? And maybe not so much for this one, but is there, are there issues with access onto the county roads at all? Does the county have to approve that? And that's been done also, I take it?
Yeah, I've actually, uh, I've actually contacted them in the last couple of days, and, um, they are in favor of me, uh, coming out from 116. Uh, I've made the application, and it's just a matter of them approving.
Great. Have nothing else?
I have a couple of questions. On page four of eight, where it talks about, um, attached accessory structure sidewalk height. It says, "The proposed sidewalk height of said structure is 16 feet, and this is the maximum sidewalk height of the detached accessory structure in the front yard is 10 feet." So what exactly is the sidewalk height requirement?
So there really isn't one for an attached accessory structure, because it's, it's attached, it's part of the house. We have that restriction for detached structures, and I believe it is, is kind of a, I don't, I don't really understand it. I think it was something to do with just that the quality of pole barns being put up, um, and just making sure that if, that it was larger than that, that we were kind of have a review mechanism, so we were allowing by CUP.
Okay.
But we don't have that process for an attached structure.
Okay. So does this structure need to abide by any of the, um, residential codes that are listed in the, um, in the district design standards, or?
We don't have any district design standards. Like, we have a southeast district.
Right.
Plan. There is nothing that would be applicable to this property. The architectural standards in our southeast district are much more recommendations than they are requirements. Um, our northeast district standards are a bit more, are more stringent. So, uh, but this, so this is in an area where, um, they have a little bit more free rein to make those calls. There wasn't anything required of them.
Presumably, then Dwight has already discussed the, the aesthetics with the applicant, then, I would think.
Yeah, that's correct. I've, I've been in conversations with the applicant about their, um, proposed building materials.
Do we know what materials this structure is going to consist of in terms of exterior materials?
Uh, off the top of my head, I don't have it.
It typically gets reviewed with the building permit application for a single home like this.
Okay, I'm curious though.
Yeah, no, that's fair. Um, so the, so the building permits where we would get house, detailed house plans that hold over materials.
Understood. Can I ask the applicant what the materials are?
Yeah, uh, it's made out of, um, corrugated, uh, steel, cedar beams, and, uh, cultured stone, uh, as decorative stone around.
On the exterior?
Yep.
And the, I would think then if you, that's the siding material is the steel, galvanized steel or whatever finish it is?
Uh, it's painted steel.
It's painted steel.
Yeah.
And I would presume that the roof is similar?
Yes.
Is the same thing?
Yeah. As a matter of fact, I don't know if you, uh, you have a slide of, I sent in a picture of what it's going to look like in the backstory.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the actual print of it, but I actually have a photograph. It's a rendition of a, of a steel building. That's a two-story, mine would be a one-story.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but it's going to look very similar to it. It's, it's a very nice building.
Okay.
Barn dominium, right?
Yeah.
You got some big catalogs you're going to store in that building, right?
Um, maybe.
I have no further questions.
Just, uh, comments are, um, appreciate the staff report. I think I agree with the conditions. Primarily, of course, the commercial activity needing to be approved or go through a process. Planting a tree, the wetland buffer, I think they're all good conditions. Obviously, appreciate that an unbuildable lot will become a nice, large lot. We like to, we of course like to see those things. That can be used, so that's great. Only question for staff, and, and if this is talked about later, that's fine, or later in 2025, but this type of situation of a plat being predating building rates, and, you know, this is a seven-acre lot, not 20, it's more than 50%. So, does this create any sort of, um, precedence moving forward for other lots that might have been predating the building rates as well?
So I would say, for the most part, lots that were created that have not been built upon that are, are less than 10 acres, but were created, to the best of our knowledge, before the development rights program. We assume that they, we err on the side of assuming that they have an assumed development right.
Okay.
To be able, they don't have, they were not, they couldn't subdivide further, but they could put a single-family home on those properties. So I don't believe it creates a precedent that we wouldn't treat similarly in other situations. I would say this is an unusual circumstance. Typically, we would, um, we don't see a lot of outlots in the city that had a pre-existing single-family home and predate the development, right? Um, typically, with an outlot, we're not going to see a structure on it. I can think of one other, um, outlot in the city that has a non-conforming structure on it. Um, but, and that lot does have three development rights. That outlot has three development rights, and that's the only other one that I'm aware of. Not to say that they're not out there, but I would say it is a fairly unique circumstance that we've come across so far.
Okay. Well, with that, any other comments from staff, questions?
My only other question, again, maybe it's from Natalie or Dwight. Says, uh, this area, um, would get municipal services in the fourth and fifth stage of the 2040 staging plan. Are we in like the first or second stage?
We're in the first phase, yeah. Yes.
So is that in years? We don't really know.
Well, so it's per comp plan, because the comprehensive plan has a 20-year planning horizon. So it says 2035 to 2040. Uh, based on the staging plan of the comprehensive plan, I will say that, um, it likely will get pushed out, extended further with the 2050 update. I'm not the one that actually makes that decision, and so we could certainly take a look at it as part of the larger update. Uh, but typically, existing residential areas, which is what's surrounding this outlot, we put them in the final stage to, the idea being in the past that we don't want to force connection before residential neighborhoods are ready uh, to petition for those, uh, services. Or, or at least push it out as far as we can.
Is that what happens as the developer buys a property, then he petitions to?
No, not necessarily. We have, so right now, especially in the southeast area, we have enough capacity for what it varies in our first phase. Additional infrastructure is going to be needed, so it's not as simple as they, putting, pulling something out before phase and petitioning. Um, I would say that we would consider a, got small residential neighborhood needing to get those services. That might be treated a little different than a developer uh, looking to put new residential structures on several acres. Uh, but everything in the first phase, they wouldn't need to have any kind of comprehensive plan amendment. That, that's just something that they're allowed to do at this point. Now, if a developer wanted to move something up in the staging plan, that would be a comprehensive plan amendment that they would have to request.
I'm just kind of curious too, sorry.
So it's a little different, the process for a developer looking to subdivide versus an existing neighborhood asking to be a part of, to get moved up.
So these are all Phase One, all these colored areas?
Yeah, everything in green is, is not in the first phase.
Looking at our.
Correct, and then everything in white is not in the MUSA.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because it's just, they're, they're disconnected, but I take it we're pulling utilities from Maple Grove, so that's why they're all over here in the east. And then we're going to have, our water tower is looking very nice these days. And our, so the water is coming along, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Just kind of curious how that whole phasing.
Yeah.
And where they decide to, you know, bring the utilities in, since they are kind of in different areas.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, I will, um, make a motion to recommend approval of the draft revolu, resolution approving the preliminary plat and variance for Old Ridge Farm. Old Farm Ridge.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed? Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right. And with that, we'll move on to the next item on the public hearing, cannabis zoning ordinance amendment, city file number 24044.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, a little bit of background. Tonight, the request.
If, if we could just have, excuse me? Could you just step out? That's okay. Just going to continue on. If you want to talk cannabis, you're, feel free to stay.
The item before you tonight is an update to the cannabis regulations. Uh, so regulations pertaining to cannabis, edible cannabinoid, and drug curfew, Amelia. There is two components in front of you tonight for the public hearing. One is a repeal and replacement of Chapter 118, which has to do with the business regulation and registration of businesses. And then there's a zoning component, which is what is under your purview. So the public hearing tonight is for both. Um, and then the planning commission's asked to make a recommendation regarding the zoning elements. The, uh, just a bit, little bit of background, 2022, the Minnesota State Legislature passed a bill permitting the sale and purchase of low potency THC edibles and beverages. So last year, we went through this exercise, a very similar exercise, but it was specific to low potency. And then in 2023, uh, so again, in 2023, we had adopted Chapter 118 to address the low potency side, and we allowed up to three licenses to be registered with the city uh, within the city's three dedicated commercial districts, which is our community commercial, neighborhood commercial, and rural commercial. And then also in 2023, higher potency cannabis for adult recreational use was legalized by the state, and the city adopted a moratorium to review the new regulations and study appropriate regulatory measures, which does expire on January 1st. So that is why this is in front of us tonight, to get this ready to go. Uh, so the city attorney did, did the drafting for Chapter 19 and recommends a complete repeal and replacement of our existing section to fully capture all necessary changes related to licensing registration of cannabis-related businesses. The current draft factors and feedback from council at the meet, last meeting on November 25th, and the draft is as restrictive as recommended without creating a conflict with state law and licensing practices. Uh, prior to this update, Chapter 118, again, allowed up to three licenses for lower potency products within the city. Uh, the update would allow for now two lower potency licenses and one higher potency retailer, for a total of three retail businesses overall. Uh, additionally, buffers are proposed in the draft uh, from all cannabis-type businesses, so not limited to the retailer. It is proposed for any, um, cannabis operation, including cultivation and manufacturing. So that would be 1,000 feet from schools, 500 feet from daycares, residential treatment facilities, and parks with amenities frequented by children. These states law does allow these buffers, and the way the city attorney explained it is we can't be more restrictive. Um, so the, again, the draft is proposing as restrictive as we feel without creating a conflict. So the city, uh, has authority from a zoning perspective to regulate where certain operations are located, but the city must allow for each license type somewhere within the city. The current recommendation is for cannabis retail operations to be permitted in the rural commercial C1 and C2, as well as the lower potency hemp edible retailers. So that is similar to what we currently have. And then, um, allow permitting cannabis cultivation with no retail component within the rural residential. And then cannabis state licensed businesses with no retail component or outside cultivation permitted use in the business park and light industrial. Uh, the, but with that being permitted, also clearly having performance standards for such businesses. Uh, and so that's in a new section of city, of the zoning ordinance being added that would, uh, so some specific, uh, performance standards would be cannabis retail establishments limiting hours from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And again, that's the maximum restriction that we can do as a city. The, and then, um, requiring comprehensive security measures. So security cameras covering all areas of the premises, both interior and exterior. An alarm system monitored 24 hours per day, seven days per week by a licensed security company. Secure storage areas for all cannabis products. Outdoor cultivation areas, as allowed in the rural residential district, must be secured by a privacy fence of at least six feet tall and 80% opacity. Fences may not include razor or concertina wire. They can have barbed wire, but these higher, um, razor or concertina wire that really, that, my understanding is public safety would be more concerned with that, with the public safety hazard that those can create. And then, uh, one thing I added since the draft went out was more discussion about the, the gates to such fences, so that we, they must be equipped with a locking device, be self-closing, and have a self-latching device. This is similar language that we require for pool fences, so it seemed appropriate to add that in here as well. Adequate ventilation systems must be installed to ensure no odor is detectable from the exterior of the building or from adjacent properties. And then I also added in some clarification for outdoor cultivation areas, because a ventilation system, obviously, is not going to be possible exterior. But, uh, they can take effective odor control measures and to ensure that no detectable odor extends beyond the premises. That may be that they are going to have to figure out how setback it needs to be so that it can't be smelt easily. Um, and I believe there's also some, there are some measures in my brief research, and that was an interesting Google search to put it on my work computer, but there are some, there are some measures that can be taken to, uh, limit the smell. Establishments must have a plan for the disposal of cannabis waste that complies with state regulations. And the operation of a cannabis business, again, is prohibited within 1,000 feet of school, 500 feet of daycare, treatment facilities, or a public park regularly used by minors. I also added in accessory structures utilized for cultivation operations in the rural residential are subject to a minimum setback of 100 feet from all property lines. That's what we, we require for agricultural structures. I wanted to specifically add this in under the assumption that there may be potentially a cultivation operation that. a cultivation operation that doesn't meet the threshold for the structure to be considered an agricultural structure, but I think it makes sense to treat them to have the same setback. All signs must comply with the city code and must not depict cannabis leaves, use lanterns for cannabis, or peel to minors. So those are the, we wanted to make these performance standards as objective as possible and make it, again, make it, keep it so that we aren't essentially adding an additional licensing requirement, which would put us in conflict with state law, but also making sure that we are being as restrictive as possible. We can always learn from it and adapt as we understand what's going to happen more. We don't really have the greatest guidance for this, but also trying to make sure that it's a, it's a yes or a no. So it's very clear when someone doesn't comply, and it's very clear when someone does comply. The recommendation tonight is to open the public hearing and take testimony on proposed amendments to the business regulations and zoning ordinance portions of the city code. Again, the purview of the commission is specific to the amendments made to the zoning ordinance, and staff recommends approval of the draft ordinance amendment for title X and title, I'm sorry, title ten and title eleven of the city code.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. No one is here. So I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I motion to close the hearing.
Great. Oh, all in favor? Yeah? All opposed, okay.
And one thing I did forget to mention, if you wanted to see it, I do have a map that was prepared for city council that provides the buffers. It may be a little difficult to, to see, but I can certainly pull that up as well if it's desired.
Well, I was going to ask for that with also like the, the zones we would allow these businesses? So we could see like, okay, you're driving from one end of the city to the other. Could you be crossing it all the way across, right, or up, down, sideways? Like, what is it, what does that touch point possibly look like?
Yeah, so the rural commercial is one of the districts, so it's this darker brown over here. The transitional rural commercial is more of a residential district still until it's redeveloped for commercial. So it's more of a holding zone, similar to our urban reserve. So it'd just be this brown. This is a daycare right here, so this is a five hundred foot buffer. And so it's, these, if these properties over here were to ever be transitional, I'm sorry, were to ever get rezoned commercial, then you wouldn't be able to put a cannabis retailer directly next to that daycare, but across the street you probably could. Keep in mind, this is, these are mostly have active businesses. We have D and D right here. I don't think D and D is going to be selling, be a retailer. I could be wrong, but the gas station's right here, so it is possible that this gas station could do the lower potency license, that's entirely possible. So it doesn't restrict, I, I don't feel it over-restricts, but we are restricting it to the, to the extent that we can. And then, so I want to do the retailers first. So then, this commercial C-one area right here is a potential place, the nearest buffer zone is really city park. And again, that, so there are some commercial properties right here that that excludes because of how close that is to fields and, and the playground. And then we go up here, we have some more commercial, there's not, while there is a thousand foot buffer for the school right here, and there is anticipated to be a playground over here, it does not conflict with the potential C-two properties over here. And then we have some more commercial down here. So that'd be where it goes. We only would allow three licenses in the city, so again, two for lower potency, only one retail, like one dedicated high potency retailer dispensary would be allowed throughout the entire city regardless of how many eligible properties there are. And then my, with the way that it's drafted as well, is we, if the county were to exceed one cannabis retailer for, sorry, the, the maximum or the limit, I forget how it's worded, but it's one every twelve thousand five hundred. And so like, once the county has surpassed that limit, the city can choose not to allow for additional license to be registered within the city.
That would be a lot.
Yeah, no, that would be a lot, and be, I think, I tried to do the math, it's like one point two million, so something like, at least like a hundred or two hundred, I can't remember how much it was, but it was definitely a lot. But if we were to ever get that saturated, we do have some ability to say no if we haven't already received a, a license to that point.
So are limiting it to three, two low and one high potency? That was the, the least that we could limit?
That is the least the city attorney is, is recommending, yes.
Can I? I'm sorry. I was just gonna, so I wasn't able to listen to the council meeting in November. Can you share, just because, I mean, we are supposed to be reflecting the opinion on the public, they're not here at the moment, but what, how many people were there? Did people have things to say? Okay. What was council's feedback on this?
Restricted to the extent as possible.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so this is where, this is the draft that's, yeah, based on that.
Okay, okay. And the, I remember when we had this conversation a year ago, the zones we chose were because we kind of looked at the types of businesses in the city and we chose those zones. And that's kind of the same guidance as to why they're, okay. I did have a question about what the attorney's perspective was on these, what's the term? The rules, the operational performance standards compared to like liquor stores?
They don't have any performance standards for liquor stores, so there's licensing standards, and so, yeah, the, these are above and beyond the licensing standards that would be with the state. So they, so the way that it's worded is they have to be compliant with the state, that's allowed, and then they also have to comply with our performance standards. So I believe that there is more, there is more regulation than a liquor license, but it is being treated similarly.
So if you want to get a retail license, or if you want to open a retail establishment in the city, you have to have a registration with the state?
Yeah, so there's a registration component.
From the state.
Exactly, yes, yeah.
So he doesn't, oh, no question. And if you, if you're just going to grow in the rural residential or the other areas where that's allowed, you just have to have a license from the state?
There's a license with the state, yeah.
But then it falls under like the agricultural rules that the city has in place?
Similar, yes. I think that our, in our city code, we say agriculture has to at least be ten acres. I don't believe that we can restrict it from properties that are less than ten acres. I think a lot of what we're going to see, particularly for the, for commercial operations, because obviously there's going to be personal operations that we have no ability to, to circumvent. But for a commercial operations, you're likely going to see indoor cultivation because of our climate. So I think that they're mostly going to be in people's basements or in a structure, so I don't think it's necessary that we need to have a ten acre parcel. It's, it's like, I, I think smaller would be better. So, but I think that it's just something to keep in mind, that while we allow outdoor cultivation, we want to make sure that we have a place that we're allowing that. I, I think likelihood of that being a wide-use outdoor component, I think is probably not going to be as popular as indoor, so.
And then as long as you have the odor regulations and things like that too, then the neighbors are not going to be affected by it.
Yeah, yeah, that was the intention of making sure that we're ventilating and that things are being securely stored.
Once we start moving down this path, how easy or difficult is it to come back and change this ordinance as we learn more about this?
I, I don't, it's a, it's a matter of just making, having the staff time and having direction to do that. I, I think that at this point, this is the, this is the best draft that we can offer you based on the available guidance. I think there's going to be changes up from the state level, I think there's going to be changes from the county level. So I think there's going to be, a need to be reviewing this regularly over the next coming years, yes.
Okay, cool.
I didn't see, is there a limitation to how many can be allowed to let, cultivate, outdoor cultivation? I ask because of this reason. If we have six-foot fences with eighty percent opacity, and let's just say we haven't restricted it at all, and we have eighty people that decide they want to create a conglomerate of growing this, and we have fences all over the place, is that, I mean, could that happen?
I mean, if we don't like the fence, we can always, we can always say we don't want the fence anymore, we can always remove that later if it, before it got to that point. I doubt, I, I have spoken with people who are interested in having a cultivation operation. I think there's at least, there's been one party, it's really small scale what they're talking about. So I don't, at this time, I'm not aware of an eighty farm conglomerate.
Okay, I know I'm being dramatic when I said that.
No, I know, but I'm, I'm just not even, I'm not even aware of something that would be acres and acres. Like, the only party that has approached that is going through the licensing process with the state or is doing what they can to go through it, because the lottery situation is something I don't even want to dive down. But the only party that I'm aware of that has gone through the process of trying to navigate this, it is a very small-scale operation, what they're talking about. It is, it's something that would be in their basement, very secured, that, that's not going to be, like, they wouldn't have a fence component. So I think that to, to that extent, I don't think that that is a, well, I wouldn't say it's not possible, I don't think that that is a going, that is a impending reality. One thing I will say is that there was a conversation with Thames, our city attorney, earlier this week about can we restrict cultivation?
Yeah.
And he, he recommends that, that that is not something that we can, that we should consider. State law only permits city caps on retail registrations. We do need to make sure we allow it in one zone, and we could theoretically cap it in another as long as we allow it in one zone without capping it. So at this point, the outdoor cultivation component, especially it, to me, it only makes sense in our agricultural area. It doesn't make sense to allow outdoor cultivation in our industrial area. So that's, that's where we've kind of landed on, you had it, these components.
But the cultivator, you have to have a license though, correct?
Correct. And, and I will say, I'm aware of hemp cultivation already occurring in the city that's been licensed for years. So I, I don't, I think that is, to some extent, is already happening and has not been an issue to this point.
Okay, and the city controls how many licenses are issued?
For retail.
Just for retail?
Yeah.
Not for cultivating?
Not for cultivation.
Yes, and we, yeah, so it's a registration component that happens on the retail. So we're, the ability to license it itself, we're not involved with as a city, but we have some ability to register and then make sure it's going into the proper zoning code and meets our zoning performance standards.
But if somebody wanted to, a farmer wanted to take eighty acres or something and do an outdoor cultivation, there's nothing that would stop them from doing that.
Other than just making sure they need all the licenses.
They have the fence and...
Yeah, in the performance standards.
Well, that's another thing, is if every farmer decides to do it, yeah, fences.
I think, I mean, that we're conservative people in Parkland though, so I don't think every farmer is going to be doing that.
I, I know, I, I know, I know, but we're supposed to think of these things, you know?
Yeah, no, I know, I, I, I think that that's, I think that that is a fair consideration. I think it's also just the likelihood of it being acres and acres and acres and acres of outdoor cultivation where our growing season is very limited for a crop like this outside, I don't think that that is going to be a reality. There might be some, but I don't, I think what would be more likely is we'll be seeing structures built for indoor cultivation.
And that's dictated by the size of the property and the size of the structure.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's already, yeah, has limitations built in.
Yeah, and the setbacks and things like that.
But again, we can always go back.
Yeah, as we understand more, as the state regulations change and then maybe cities' authority changes to some degree, then we'll be able to adjust as, as, as we can.
So if, if those cultivations areas were around Lindsay's house, and she could bring something up and say, I don't like that, and we could, some, somebody could change it, we could go back and readdress the...
I don't know that we can say that a cultivation area can't go anywhere in the city, so we'd have to, I don't, I, that part I don't know about. If there's a license already issued, it might be harder to revoke a license. I think that if there is like, okay, we've learned from this, and we need to add some performance standards, that we can certainly do.
Okay.
And then again, if, if something changes on the state level, where either they're like, okay, this was too lenient, and we need to, we're going to allow some further restrictions, then I think we'd have some ability at that point.
So maybe it's similar to what, the moratorium that you guys put on storage, what was the storage one that you put the moratorium on?
Yeah, at this point, we have exhausted the moratorium, and the, the state law will not allow for an additional moratorium at this time, so.
So we might be getting more mini storage?
Oh, no, 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 more, more cannabis, no, no more mini storage, no more mini storage.
Would it be similar to that if you could put a moratorium on it?
Yeah, if there was a change in the...
If it started to become too many in the city, just like you did with the mini storage?
Uh, so if there was a change in state law, I think right now, the way the state laws were to, we're no longer, we, we were given a year if we wanted to, to put a moratorium, which we...
You guys already did a moratorium.
Yeah, so. So I, yeah, it's, unfortunately, the, the guidance from the state and county, the county and the county had something in the works. We were told that that's now been delayed to twenty twenty-five. So unfortunately, we're, we're kind of hanging by the edge of our seat, unfortunately. We just have not gotten a great deal of guidance on how to implement this and what, and I think our approach from the staff level is we, we don't want to be so restrictive that we gain a lot of attention and then we create problems on the legal side of things, but we do want to be restrictive to what is compliant with state law.
Does, and again, I'm going back to the, how many of these might occur here? Is, is there any way that you could say it could only occur every so many acres so that you can, so you, you just can't have somebody come in and just start having all these cultivation?
That, according to things, we can't restrict the number in the zoning district that we ident, that we allow the outdoor cultivation.
Well, and I think that's an important distinction, is outside cultivation is only allowed in certain areas of the city. So we're already, right, and then the likelihood that it grows en masse in those particular areas, I do agree, the risk is probably low. And if the lawyer says we can't do it, I think, I have more questions, but I'll pause.
It may not be very economically feasible anyways, if you have to put up a big six-foot semi opaque fence, you know, and around acres and acres, I mean, when you have a corner soybean farmer, they don't have to do that.
Right.
But that is probably a little, little higher value crop, but...
Well, and then the security element, because they have to have monitoring, and so I think outdoor cultivation's going, I don't, like, I'm not going to say that it's not going to happen, I just think that we've done what we can, that, that it might limit itself to the extent that we believe is possible.
From a, did you have a...
If I, if I could, Natalie, tell me to be quiet if I go too far. I'm not crazy about this at all. Everything has changed, because there was twelve hundred licenses originally, and then that was reduced to six hundred licenses. Was that in the county or state, Natalie?
I, I think that was the state lottery, I'm not, I'm...
And now it's all on hold, so that's number one good thing. Number two, the one group that is talking about doing it in our town wants it locked up, they want to grow twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five days a year, can't do that outdoor. And they tell me that's the only way it would be profitable for them. So just, I'm digging deep personally into this because, and then for me, and I think in all of us up there, it's still a federal crime, and we keep pounding our attorney that, how can we do this when it's federal crime? So as you mentioned, this is how much attention we had at the council, and you got all of these people in the audience talking, we, it's going to be as conservative as we possibly can if we have to. And that's my opinion, not the opinion of the whole council, so.
Doesn't look like there's that many licenses. Is that right? Cannabis cultivator, thirteen licenses in the state?
Yeah, as, as I think there's other limitations at play, so I, I don't think.
But then a retailer, there's thirty-eight. You'd almost think there'd be more cultivator licenses than a retailer.
Yeah, I'm not quite certain what you're looking at. But I do know like the number of licenses being rolled out is already a limiting factor.
Maybe this is social equity. Oh, this says social equity license.
One, just a macroeconomic thought is, I'm surprised that legal doesn't see an issue with these performance standards and not having any on liquor stores. Like, could they come after, I don't know, maybe other cities are doing this, but, right? Because like, not showing cannabis leaves, like, there's liquor stores with liquor bottles on them in the front, right? I mean, so I'm just wondering, are they going to come after the city for these performance standards? And the hours being different than liquor stores and?
So the hours are the limits, the, the hours are called out in state law. That we can, we can limit it to those hours that we have to the system. So I, I think the, the way that the guidance so far has read is that we do have zoning authority. Still limited, but we do have some zoning capabilities to do some restrictions. Not to say, I don't, I honestly, I have never been very involved with liquor licenses. And it's never really come up to this extent in my career. Could we do similar regulations? Do you have to look at it? I don't know that, I don't know that we have.
I'm not suggesting that, I just.
But, but yeah, I think, it's very possible that this could be too restrictive. And I mean, to our best efforts, we have to go and adjust it at per state order later on. But this is what Thames was comfortable recommending based off of his, his knowledge looking into this over the last few months.
Yep, okay. It was more of just enough, so great, like.
Yeah.
You know, and we're all learning at the same time. It's all so unprecedented, right?
Well, and typically with signs, and you do have to be careful with freedom of speech. So I was surprised to do that too. But.
Right.
But Thames taught me about sign ordinances. So if he says it's okay, then we're going.
Sure, we trust the lawyer, okay. Another question, number four of the cannabis business types. What does number four mean?
I'm sorry.
Cannabis state license businesses with no retail or outside cultivation component?
Oh, so basically, all the other types of licenses that don't have an outdoor cultivation or retail component. So there's a few different licenses, like testing centers, there's some other licenses throughout the city. We're saying they can go in that industrial area.
Got it. Okay, I was like, what type of business would that be?
We're supposed to allow for each license type within some type of zone in the city. So that's kind of where we just, so we are going to allow cultivation, rural residential. So that takes care of the outdoor component. We're going to limit cultivation in the industrial, just, just indoor only. And then industrial also is kind of the catch-all for any of those other licenses that we didn't specifically call out. And then we only, the retail component, we only want to see in our commercial district, so.
I think it looks pretty good.
I agree. I think it looks good. Other questions or thoughts? Okay, let's see here. I will entertain a motion to recommend approval of the draft ordinance amending chapter nineteen and title X of the city code.
Wait a second.
Can I change it to make a motion? Okay, in a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'll say aye. I'm not opposed. I'll go along.
He's in favor.
I'm in favor.
Oh, okay. You do what you want to do, whatever your vote you want.
This, no, I'm fine.
I understand. I think this has to finish there.
We all understand very much.
Okay, all right, great. And now to other business, the draft twenty twenty-four annual report and twenty twenty-five priorities.
Thank you. I don't have really a presentation on this. And what you have in front of you is the draft report, reporting on everything that we worked on this past year. Please let me know if you see any errors or if there's any clarification you think needs to be added. And then with this report, we also forward our, our hopes and dreams for the next year. I did hear back from the chair of Roman. And she said she wanted to add considering tree preservation or replacement requirement, particularly on agricultural land, to priorities, the priorities list. And that was really the only comment I had from her.
Okay.
I, I included, believe I did, now I'm second guessing myself, I think I included your, did I not?
Yeah.
No, 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 no. Okay.
What?
The review meeting or the public hearing, no, so, okay, good. Ah, so I included that one. And then I know we've also talked many times about reviewing our accessory structural ordinance to potentially make that a, figuring out where we could do an administrative approval process rather than continuously having CUPs that take less than two minutes to discuss and cost time and money to process. So that's what I have, I think, mostly for the priorities. But please let me know if there's anything else that you would like to see. Sometimes we also provide priorities as to what we want our training session to look like in the new year.
One question about the twenty twenty-four ones. So it looks like we held sessions on the role of in legislation surrounding the Met Council, break down the city code and comp plan, state laws relevant to planning and the planning. When were those, when were those held?
The training session on the comp plan, we, so that was the training session that we held earlier. So we did like, uh, that was the Jeopardy.
That was the Jeopardy one?
Was that the Jeopardy one?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that was the Jeopardy. And then the other ones, state laws relevant to planning and the plan? Oh, that was in with the two?
Yeah, those, yes, part of the two. So that was, so.
All three of those were basically, oh.
Yeah, and were a part of that training session.
I see. Okay, because that was the only training session I kind of remembered, so I wasn't sure if it was three separate ones.
Yeah, the training session was, was, was hold. Wow, okay, I'll change that.
Oh, yeah.
Was held. How did my word not catch that?
Yeah, oh, I didn't know that either.
Natalie. You know that map that you showed, talking about where the, the areas? Could you send that to me? Could, could you?
The, the one that I showed this meeting?
Yeah.
I will see what I can do. Right now, it's not a published map.
No, no, the one that showed the.
The radius.
The radius.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see what I can, I'll see what I can do. I'll try to help me out. It's kind of on my computer though.
I don't need it now.
He's actually our GIS expert. I, I just know enough to be dangerous with it, so. I will ask him down if he remembers how to do it.
I have a few comments on the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Okay. Is this like the recap to council of the impact we've made? Because if it is, I was thinking, and you can shoot this down, okay? But does it make sense to report, these are just some ideas, but just I'm thinking about impact. And I do sales as a professional, so this is kind of what I think about, right? But how many open forums were part of our work, how many? I did see you mention the working session. New ideas submitted or like things brought forth from this commission? I don't think we ever keep track of how many people attend our meetings, maybe, but.
No, we don't require people to.
Yeah, as far as the public, but like, you know, there were some really well-attended meetings that we had quite a bit of member of the public speak. I don't know if we ever keep track of how many members of the public speak in either any commission's meetings. But it might be interesting to just show that impact. It might be interesting for a city to just know, to show, hey, we're here and we're hearing from you and this is in what volume? And then as far as our twenty twenty-five priorities, I just, the way it was worded, I was like, hmm. I wonder if there's a way that it should be broader in scope. Okay, let me find where this is now. And this is just for you to consider. You don't have to do this, okay? I'm just thinking it out loud. Okay, in addition to the commission's role to review land use applications, the planning commission proposes the following priorities. I was just thinking about like, we do more than reviewing land use applications, right? It's like guiding, recommending to the council, like the city, the city direction, what, what we're doing, what we're cultivating, what we want to see for our town. We're providing recommendations, guidance and perspective. I just thought maybe that could be reflected maybe a little bit differently.
Okay, so land use application and provide recommendations on city-driven initiatives, something like that?
Yeah, city-driven initiatives or however you want to state it. I just think, you know, the role that this commission plays is more than reviewing.
No, fair enough. I was not trying to minimize the role.
No, I, I'm not thinking at all.
I appreciate you calling out the wording because that you are correct, that is half the picture, so.
I just want to be sure like council, you know, sees us as a partner.
Yeah.
The other thought I had, I know we talked about this forever ago, but for twenty twenty-five priorities, we talked about new businesses coming to town and the requirements to get access to services. We ta, um, okay, you might remember this, this was forever ago, but like, getting sewer and water hooked up, the requirements, the investment, yeah, the resources to help small business owners with those investments. Those kind of, just thinking about if I'm, you know, a new business owner looking to build a business in Corcoran, what do those resources look like? What are the requirements? It just can seem like quite some challenges and hurdles. I don't know how we want to word that as a priority or if that's in capacity for twenty twenty-five. But in the future, as we are open and calling for developers to open businesses here in different areas of the city, we might want to make that barrier to entry a little bit more palatable.
Okay, so what I think we can say, so what you are talking about.
Yeah.
Uh, starts to go into like an advisory body that you typically see for economic development. So it's slightly different than the planning commission. But what we can do in the planning commission purview is reviewing our ordinances to reduce barriers of entry. I think that that's.
That's what I'm meaning, essentially, yep. Cool. And the one other edit I would say, and I appreciate that you included my suggestion around increasing the notice radius. I'd rather we rephrase it to be something along the lines of providing visibility. Maybe it's a brainstorm, because I like how you said about the review landscaping standards. You, you know, posed it as a question, like, this is what we're solving for. I think my point is what we're solving for is development or large significant changes between, well, within the non-musa area or in transition from musa to non-musa. Like, those can be really impactful areas.
Pose the question, how can we increase visibility of development proposals in the rural area? And then example, consider increasing by a thousand feet?
Yeah, five hundred to a, or, yeah, okay, yes, yeah. Do you know what I mean though? Because maybe we'll have other ideas.
Is there also some other way to put a notice out there or even on our website?
We do, we do have notices on our website and we do have notice, we do a sign on the property.
Is there a way for people to sign up for notices? Because you don't know when a notice is going to happen, you're not always looking at our website.
We're going to have to talk with Aaron, but I believe there's a way to get the.
There's, there's a subscribe option on the city's website for public notices.
It's not very visible.
Yeah, the, the website that we use isn't the most.
And agenda packets for both council mayor or council planning and parks. You can sign up and add all of those things.
And so when those are uploaded, then everyone who's subscribed gets an email saying a new item is in the.
Is it every new item or is it just certain ones?
So I believe it's every agenda.
Every agenda.
And then public hearing notices, it would be every public hearing notice. So it wouldn't just be zoning, it'd be, you know, we have public hearings for a new liquor license. And so there's other public hearings that we have too. But it would include all the zoning, public hearings, so.
And it includes everything that's being brought before the commissions?
Yes, to my knowledge, yes.
Facebook.
Oh, yeah, for Facebook, yeah.
Ton of, ton of stuff that's out there that people got to sign up for. So, and then again, the, the blue sign goes up. How long does that go up?
That goes up typically after we get the, yeah, typically the same time that we're dealing with getting the public hearing notice published. We put up the sign.
Yep. So I mean, if you drive by, that's, that's a good notice too, that plan development that's happened there.
Oh, right, right up the.
Yeah, yeah.
On, on whatever property, yep.
Yeah, there's, there's certain small applications you won't see that with. So like, like the subdivision in front of us tonight, there's no sign for that. Our policy is more, it has to be more than three lots subdivision. But for the, the larger developments, you would see that. And then for a conditional use permit in a, near a residential area, things like that, you would see a development sign.
What, what are we doing, and, and part of it's addressed in here as far as the community farms, agri-hoods, things like that. But what are we doing or what could we do to promote the kind of development that we do want to see in this city? And whether that's through creative financing options, I don't know if this city has looked at.
Yeah, so again, that goes into economic development strategies, which isn't quite in our purview. At this time, there doesn't seem to be an appetite on city council to be financing development. So that would definitely be a much broader policy discussion before that, that. But what we can do from our perspective is, again, going back to what, where can we reduce barriers of entry within our zoning ordinance? And sometimes honestly, even time is money, so where can we streamline the review process? Do we need, a site plan for a permitted business?
Right.
Does that really need to go in front of the planning commission and city council? Could that be approved immediately? Things like that can actually, it can also drive economic development and attract development more than, not necessarily more, but all in addition to financing programs. So we can look at where we can streamline our zoning ordinance.
So making it as easy for a small developer to come in as, as a big huge developer that can spend the time and have the attorney and, you know, jump through all the hoops and, you know, have his project on hold for however many months it takes to go through the process.
Right, for something that doesn't require an EAW.
Like our downtown area, from, from what I look at the plan for the downtown area, that sounds more like it would be more conducive to a number of small developers coming in and doing projects. I don't know, how are we planning on doing that? Is it being plotted out? And then lots are being sold and they're zoned in a particular way?
The downtown, the downtown area, there's one landowner in most parts. I think there's a couple of smaller, yeah. So there's one large landowner, so he kind of holds the strings on that. But yeah, he could certainly work with different developers and parcel it out. But until he's ready to move forward with something, the city is not really, we're not able to force him to develop. So it's up to.
So that's on his timetable and you guys really don't have any idea when he plans on doing that?
I haven't heard anything at this time, so.
I kind of, I kind of poke at him every couple of weeks.
The Hope Development, there's a sign up there. That they're like soliciting developers that want to come in and be part of that. So that sounds like it has been plotted out. I mean, we have the plan.
First phase, yes, so they would still have to come in for, I think it's a four-phase plan, if it, four or five phases, we can't remember.
And are they soliciting for like one big developer to come in and do it?
I don't think so. I think it's going to be a combination. So they have one developer for the villas and townhomes. So they're probably looking for another developer to do the apartments. And it might be that they have, they find a builder that wants to do one or all the apartment buildings. It's, I think that they're being flexible with it. And the commercial would likely be, it could be, again, it could be a situation where one commercial developer comes in and does it all. It could be that the, someone wants to do this medical building, someone wants to do this retailer. It, it, there's, it's a dynamic situation at this point.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, what I've seen so far, it, it looks very similar to what other suburbs have done. You know, you get one big developer come in and they build a bunch of gray apartment buildings or townhomes. It, it doesn't seem to be a lot of character, a lot of, you know, variety to the developments that have gone in so far. And I don't know how, other than getting a lot of small developers to come in, how you get that type of variety. I mean, it sounds like we want our downtown area to look kind of like a main street of days gone by. Well, we don't have anything like that. I mean, we have no historical main street, no buildings existing. So how do we keep it from looking like Arbor Lakes and Maple? So how do we keep it from looking like Arbor Lakes and Maple Grove? I mean, is it just probably going to look like Arbor Lakes and Maple Grove?
I don't know that it would look like Arbor Lakes and Maple Grove. Uh, we do have that master plan for that area, so there's blocks and, and that, that I, I think just that alone would make it difficult to look like Arbor, um, Arbor Lakes. Uh, but the, the reality of encouraging small developers, it, it can be really challenging for small developers to pay for the infrastructure that's needed. So I think that's, we do have some small developers coming in. Um, a lot of the, like, I would say, I don't even want to say small, but like Woodland Hills is, is a, not necessarily a national developer to my understanding of their business model. Uh, but those are going to be very expensive homes to be able to offset the infrastructure that they're putting in. So I think that that, again, it kind of goes back to the barriers of entry. And with the current direction from council, not wanting to facilitate any infrastructure investments other than what we have found absolutely necessary, such as the water tower and water treatment plant. And things like roads can be very limiting to a smaller developer. So it's without having some kind of financing program to kind of offset that, it can be really difficult to have that level of control that you're looking for. But I think what we do is we try to have that master plan. So when we do have a developer in the room, we try to stick as close to that vision as possible. So that's, those are the strategies that we have there. So the downtown area is a bit, uh, is a bit different than some of the other developments you're seeing. Being that there is a, a master plan for that downtown core, uh, in our southeast district plan. So like St. Therese, um, really helped kick that off. And I would say that, that St. Therese development is, like, they're, the, um, they have many amenities available to the public there. My understanding is there's the bistro, so, and there's supposed to be a, um, oh my God, I forgot the word. I never can say the word. The, the dealie outside.
Amphitheater.
Thank you.
I forget it too.
The amphitheater, like, so that there can be connections to communities. So I think, um, that we have just, that's really the first downtown component to start realizing that vision. That's come in and we, and we did hold true to the zoning district and that southeast district plan. And that, um, is aligning with like the road network that we anticipated for it and, um, the interaction between the community space and, um, private use, so.
How closely does the city look at the aesthetics of some of these proposals when they come in? Is that pretty much just left up to the developer?
So we have building material standards that we look at, um, for our zoning code. And then again, the southeast district, it's recommended. That one was not really created with teeth. Uh, the downtown core is a bit different, but the larger southeast district, there is a recommended architectural and for like our planned unit development ordinance, I tried to do what I could to recommend that a bit further. But as far as like requiring a rural aesthetic, um, we don't, that plan currently does not say you must, it's recommended. The northeast district has a much higher level of building material standard. They have type one, type two, type, so we do look at it closely to the extent that our zoning ordinance has called out what is required of this district.
Who ultimately then decides? Is that the, when they issue the building permit? Is that when you say, okay, this meets our standards or?
So for like a single-family home, as part of a planned unit development, we, we require samples to go through the planning process. And then we make sure that the building, the building permits that come in are in compliance with those samples. The, as far as like a commercial building or a multifamily building, that requires site plan approval. So that does come in, uh, that's a little different than what was seen tonight where it's, it was a plat and it doesn't require a site plan. So we don't, we're not looking at the building materials for that level of development. But for like multifamily, we would be looking at the materials when it comes in for that site plan.
Yeah, I think I'm talking a little bit more than just materials. I'm talking about the formal aspect of, of whatever's being proposed, you know, in terms of its form, massing. Its articulation.
Yeah, yeah, no, so we look at that, that's all part of our building standards, yeah.
And that's, you guys can input to that too on, on the whole design.
It's usually part of our packets, you know.
I'd like to see this, you guys.
Yeah, we have, we look at it pretty closely. Yeah, I would say that that's part of the analysis that we have to go through. It's just different districts require it to different extents and different uses require it to different extents.
And one example, if I may, I'm sorry, like Hope Church, they are going, they are following, Natalie, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, they are following the northeast standards or better than. So while there's a sign up, they're looking for these people, they're vetting out people that are trying to do it not well. They are, that's, they're the general contractor. They want stuff nice around the church and they want it very specific. They get some very specific thoughts and ideas, but they'll also listen to the planning, the planning group. I mean, we're listening, everybody's listening. And when it gets in front of us, you guys made comments, we make comments. And sometimes they say, let's take it back and let's, let's re-pass this, redraw it.
But you know, I'll just use the, what came forward tonight as an example. I mean, it would have been nice to have a little bit more, I mean, I, I looked at the elevations and I go, geez.
Yeah, so what, that's different in that single-family homes do not require a site plan approval. So if, if our zoning ordinance said, single-family, each single-family home had to go to a site plan approval, that, that would be where that would come in, so.
But we don't have the discretion to.
I understand that, I understand that, but I'm just trying to understand my role. I'm still relatively new, so.
That's what I'm trying to say, that's why it's a difference, that's why, I'm just trying to explain, that's the difference.
When I, when I jumped on the planning commission, I didn't like things and I said it. And I think Natalie was just starting out and there has been a lot of things done to kind of get things corralled and stuff. But.
But you don't want to say it, you don't want to say it when it, when it's time to act on it.
Well, you don't want to, right, but you don't want to say this looks like trash, I don't like it. You want to say it, I think you better say it and then make the suggestion of what you think would make it look better. In, in, in comments like Maple Grove, it was brick, stone, glass. That was what things had to be done, used. It couldn't be tip-ups, it couldn't be those kind of things. That's how much that improved in time. A lot of it looks the same and stuff.
But it's.
I think usually because it's all done by one developer, so it's all going to be uniform and look the same.
But as Natalie said, that's what we've got next door here, the whole corner here is owned by one and then the other corner is owned by the same person.
But you have to understand, it's so much, it's, it's, it's like an ox and moron. I mean, on one hand, we're, we're trying to make it easier, you know, it's, we to encourage. And then on the other hand, we say, well, I want to see more, you know, it's just.
Yeah, but if, but if you do have a standard set in place that they can take and look at that and then not have to get approval for every little thing, I think that's what we're trying to make a little easier.
Yeah, yeah, so we.
I would like, for me, you know, because I'm an architect. So I would like to see stuff, you know, before, a lot more detail before it gets to like what happened tonight where you have to approve it. I mean, it, but I, but maybe that's not, maybe that's not what this group is supposed to do.
Yeah, so we're responding to an application and with the review deadline. So it's really, the, we have any, we don't, we are not seeing this month in advance to influence it. And then I'd also say, again, it goes back to what is the use, what is the district's own standards? So we don't have discretion to require of a single-family home more than what our zoning ordinance sets. So if we don't like the way the single-family homes are looking, then that'd be performance standards that we're changing in our district standards.
Okay, okay.
And we, we've done it on, uh, as council, we don't like this facade. We don't like garages on the same side, we like them flipped. We say it, you guys can absolutely say it too. And then these guys will sit here and say, well, I can't really do that. Or it's a good idea, what do you think, developer? I mean, say it, have, have a, have it good. It's why you guys have been chosen, you guys speak your piece.
I like that you guys don't let the garage be the main focal point of the front of the house. I mean, because you do see that in a lot of suburbs where it's like, is this a garage or is this a house?
Have you ever seen, have you ever seen the homes where you don't even see the garage doors? The garage doors are off to the side.
I know, I want one of those houses sometimes.
It's sweet looking, but the garage, the windows in the garage look like it's another room. And then they're on the different side, but then we've got side yard issues and just some crazy, crazy stuff.
Okay, so any other edits to the, uh, 2024 report or 2025 prior priorities?
Um, if we think of something later, can we add, or it looks like a pretty good list already.
Yeah, so what, what happens is these get forwarded to council and then in January, we have a few strategic planning sessions with council to outline the priorities for staff. And then, so this list, we try to, we, they consider that and incorporate it where it fits with the strategic planning. And then I also refer to this later throughout the year, like if something else comes up and it's just like, hey, we really need to do this now and this was a planning commission priority. So it's something for me to refer back to. So yeah, we can, we can, it can be a living list. Um, it's just, there's also the matter of staff time, where also requires council direction.
Sure. Okay, thanks for hearing us out and some of our thoughts. Um, any, the planning project update?
Is there anything? I don't, I don't think so. Is there any questions on it?
No. Yeah, I just noticed the one new thing on here, it's not coming before the commission yet, but it's the A plus A tree and landscape or the.
Yes, that'll be a concept plan that I have scheduled for, uh, I have to finish the complete letter. I'm gonna send it out tomorrow, but I believe that'd be the second meeting in January going to council. And then Quick Trip is scheduled for January, planning commission on the seventh.
So the, the landscape plan or the public works area? Is, is he purchasing that entire property around the public works?
I, I believe so, the plan seems to suggest they are, would be purchasing it, the entire thing for what they're hoping to do. It's a, right now, it's a combination of, it, right now, it's not, none of what they're proposing is an allowed use in the district, so it'd be a conversation with the city council to see if there is.
The yard waste recycling.
The yard waste recycling is not allowed use. And then they also want to have an outdoor, um, parking component for other, like, not only for their equipment and vehicles, but other landscaper contractors to park and store their equipment and vehicles.
It's gonna be a big outdoor storage.
Yeah, so there's gonna be a discussion with council, that's all I can really say about it right now.
It's gonna look like the corner of ten and nineteen kind of.
I don't know, I, I, I don't know. I would say that, um, the other thing too is what they're proposing, they're not proposing any type of a building and we don't allow a parking area without a building. So I, there's just a lot of, lot of, um, barriers that would need to be removed with zoning ordinance amendments. And so it's a council discussion to see if there's desire.
Such a beautiful piece of property there, kind of a shame that, I mean, it's zone rural residential right now, but it sounds like they're really.
Around the public works?
Yeah, yeah, so there was discussion about rezoning it, but there hasn't been a rezoning application.
We haven't done that to be, I thought there was four.
There's four development rights on it.
There's, there's, there are development rights on the property, I can't remember if it's three or four.
It's four.
And then to the west, it was a number of residential, a number of large.
To the east, yeah, to the east, there's a, there's nine residential lots, yeah. And so, yeah, the original concept plan for that included three or four commercial lots. Uh, um, they were required rezoning, so there was multiple discussions about that, but there has been no rezoning application, yeah.
But they've put the for sale sign up on it as if it has been rezoned.
Yep, they get all kinds of suggestions on that sign.
I know, they know, they know, they know they have to rezon it.
Around the public works building?
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I, the dead sign went up, I saw it and I'm like, no, it's not.
Well, that's the same guy that wanted to do nineteen.
Same group?
I think he had seven development rights and his plan showed nineteen or something, yeah.
No, we aren't grossly aware of.
What's the situation, um? Oh, ask you guys after. Okay. Mr. Merrick?
I don't have anything, this is, I thank you for letting me talk and say, but.
No, thanks for coming.
Have at it, you guys, we're gonna, we're gonna make this place to continue to be a great place to live, but let's get more creative. I, I don't want it to be Corcoran, I don't want it to be Maple Grove too, or I don't want anything like that. That's a great place, this is better, let's make it even better. I, I, I get nothing, you guys got questions for me?
If we wanted to try to do some kind of engagement and maybe it doesn't even have to be official through the planning commission, some kind of engagement with neighbors and, and the community, uh, to try to get, I don't know. Does Corcoran ever do anything like a working group with community members?
So I believe we did a, uh, we did a working group for the southeast district. We had like a, a subcommittee that worked on the southeast district plan. So yeah, we have, we have had examples of that. Um, sometimes we have a lot of difficulty attracting people to do like a, a formal board. We have a lot more interest in like open houses. Uh, so we did for our northeast district planning initiative, a couple of years back, we did several open houses and that attracted a lot of people. But I think there's a, a time commitment issue where we run into with like a, a separate sub-board. Not to say we can't, certainly try to see if there's a, a new desire for that. But yeah, we, uh, typically it's, um, it's a result of some type of city initiative such as like our southeast district plan or some kind of master planning session. Um, I do anticipate with the 2015 comprehensive plan, once we have an understanding of what will be required of us as a city, that there will be several opportunities for community engagement components, so. As far as what exactly that looks like, I don't think that I can speak to that at this point. I think, uh, it'd be a larger con, a larger conversation with council.
I'm thinking even engaging people like, you know, say the people that wanted to run for the city council. I mean, they're obviously engaged, they want to be on the council and we had people coming. I think one was from Bellwether, we had a couple others from the rural area.
Yep, and we did, we had a legal, legal, legal women voters conversation. There was seventy people in the.
But I mean, maybe people like that would be interested in forming some kind of a, a group just to kind of discuss their visions for the city and. Or, or if we wanted to pick a specific topic that.
Yep, again, that, that's not something that's in our budget to do that. Anybody can have those conversations, get those same calls, so.
Yeah, I think it would be more of a volunteer thing frankly.
Yeah.
I like the idea of like, if, you know, I get it around an initiative, so like maybe, I mean, the 2050 count plan absolutely will be a time that people are gonna.
It's a big one, that'd be huge.
And we should absolutely put our effort to get people to come out, say their perspectives, to define Corcoran, everyone should say their own definition of it and we, or you know what I mean? But you know, uh, that would be the initiative to have.
Very upcoming initiative, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, to your point, like those types of people that ran care a lot, they should be out talking, you know, and providing input, so I totally agree. All right, anything else?
If you've got a way to get people here, let us know. I invite, I'm always asking for volunteers for, for everything we've got going on, National Light Out, the JCs, Corcoran Lions, all of these things. I'm always trying, but I think when you're listening or when you're watching on, on, uh, on the live feed, there's eight to ten maybe usually, there, there's been a few times where it's been up 20, 25. We've had those couple events where their both rooms were full and you guys have seen that. You guys had them full and they went home and told their friends and we had that many more at council. That's the stuff we, I'd like, again, curbing and not repeating each other and, and, you know, a spokesperson for a group might not necessarily be the right thing, but if somebody says stuff, we don't need those meetings to go, go, the we are's of the next day kind of deal. But everybody's input is welcome and I would look at Facebook, I do all of these things. There's a lot of people that critique the planning group, council and stuff. Come on, Corcoran, you can do better. I always send messages back, what are your suggestions? I would love to hear them, I'd love the comments and I don't get any replies. So it's, it's frustrating, but. So it's, it's frustrating, but.
Yeah, I know, I, when, when the surveys come out, I all, I, I live in Bellwether.
Yeah.
And so I send that out to, to the civics group.
Love it.
And I, I don't even know if they participate, but I send it out.
So I will say, we had, uh, the park remaster survey, and I don't know what the ratio of Bellwether residents, other respondents, but it was the, uh, most responses we've received to a survey since I have been here at least. Uh, so that was really encouraging. I was like, well, apparently I need to do more park planning.
I think with that, it would be easy for people to get out there and I watch all of it, you know, it all sounds good.
Yeah, right. Well, I don't, I, I have, um, Jessica Christensen-Buck is our Parks and Trail, our Parks and Recreation Supervisor, uh, and she's leading the planning process on that. And so, but she, um, she's the one that's going to be summarizing that information, so if you're curious, it should be on the next Parks and Trails Commission in December. Uh, so I don't know exactly what the feedback was, but I, I'm assuming it, a lot of people were, had really some valuable insights, so.
All right, so I will just highlight the suggested liaison calendar with twelve, twelve being, um.
Zicky? Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because I meant to. I cannot come on that date, so I was hoping somebody could switch dates with me possibly.
Is that a?
It's a recommended.
Thursday?
Oh, the, yes, it is next Thursday.
Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Yeah, I can't, I'll be in your.
I'm here in a second.
How about you, Peter?
When is it, next?
Um, next Thursday, the twelfth?
Yeah, and just.
Nope.